I'll be back in like five, I'll just be chair. So I'll take a motion.
So first you want to call to order and then.
Oh. All right, call the meeting to order? Okay, and then I'll take a motion.
Okay, I motion to go into executive session, person went to Massachusetts General Laws thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to return to open session.
Second.
I'll in favor, I'll take a roll call vote.
I read.
I leary.
I link.
Okay, we'll see you folks at seven.
Those in attendance, they will be going to executive session, they will return at seven P M. This again will be videotaped for the evening. Thank you very much.
All right. I will take a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the executive and regular sessions of the Noel School Committee meeting on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, and the homeschool request as proposed.
All in favor, takes a roll call vote.
I read.
I leary.
I link.
I Warren Dorf. No Christina yet, right?
I Kane.
Oh, there we are.
There she is.
There you go, thank you. Um, okay, action item four point one, additional special education support.
All right, in your packet is a memorandum from Director of Student Services Susan Theodoro requesting an additional special education support aid for the high school library. We are looking to try and support some students in their remote learning that are having some difficulty, and we believe that we can bring some students in for half days or afternoons over the cohort period and support them for short intervals and trying to get them on track with their remote learning and then bring on more students as we go. But we will need to add an additional aid, this would be a COVID aid in terms of it being a short duration of time.
Anybody have any questions?
Do you already have someone for that, Matt?
Um, this is specifically to work with some high need students that is beyond our capability that we are currently doing with our special educators.
Matt, is this funding from our budget or from CARES Act money?
Um, at this time, we've basically submitted all of our CARES Act money, so this would be from our budget. Uh, but we are hoping that there will be additional rounds, but we do not know.
Okay.
They will go to CARES Act money if it is replenished and or continued after December thirty-first.
All right, thank you.
Matt, maybe I didn't understand you. Do we have someone that you already are hiring for this, like now?
Oh, yes, we have the person on board already.
Okay, thanks, okay.
All right, I'll take a motion then.
Okay, I'd like to motion to approve the addition of the temporary COVID nineteen related special education library aid at the high school the remainder of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as requested.
Second.
All in favor, roll call vote.
I Kane.
I read.
I leary. I link.
I Warren Dorf, okay. Four point two, Massachusetts Controlled Substance Registration for School Nurse Delegation Programs.
All right, so this is a process that's become more formalized on the state level. Um, Sue Theodoro is here and can answer questions, but essentially if we have field trips or other types of situations where a nurse may not be present, we could assign someone to administer some medications to students. Basically, they've changed this so that we have to have a registered kind of storage area and we have to pay a three hundred dollar fee. Uh, this needs to be renewed on a yearly basis and we need to budget for going forward. The last step that we have is the approval of school committee, so all other steps have been accomplished at this time. Sue, anything to add to that?
Oh, the delegation of medication is not a new procedure, we do that annually. Cheryl Almeida previously was our medication delegator and Beth McDougal took over this year in her retirement. But the state now is requiring that our school district files this paperwork to become a controlled substance registration and it comes with a three hundred dollar annual fee. And so, uh, as we're heading into budget season, we are not going on any field trips to our knowledge this year, so that's the only time that we would delegate medication. But we just want to get into a system of just annual renewal so that it doesn't fall off of our radar.
And my understanding is Sue, now the school committees have to vote on it annually. School.
Uh, I, well, I, this will be our initial registration and then we haven't done it a second time, so yeah. It is likely that we'll have to do it again, but it may make sense to just schedule it for January every year.
Yeah. Good.
Do we know who receives that fee? Uh, like what department, what that fee is going?
They write the check to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it says, but it is the Health and Human Services. So. Why, I, I, I have tried so hard to find more information, it's the Controlled Substance Bureau of Public Health.
Okay.
This is new, it came to us in a memo June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and because we were not going on field trips, we didn't do much with it, but they continue to send us reminders of our failure to submit it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I will take a motion.
Okay, I motion to authorize and permit the delegation of medications administration in a school by a registered nurse to unlicensed school personnel as required by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
Second.
All of those in favor, it takes a roll call vote.
I Kane.
I leary.
I read.
Link.
I Warren Dorf, okay, four point three, student activity accounts.
All right, in closing your packet, you will find student activity counts for your review and approval as we do every year. As stated in policy J J F, the school community is to annually approve all student activity groups, including specific funding sources and the objective mission for each activity. Warren is here, if there are any questions. We have been through this process now for a few years, I believe we've added um, the next, the freshman class group and maybe one or other two other areas. Warren, anything you want to add?
No, it's just standard stuff, we have to authorize the accounts every year. So you have in there a balance for each account, and then there's a, another document which has kind of the charter of each account. And it's just, it's an annual thing that we have to do.
Thanks, Warren, any, any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the middle and high school student activity accounts, funding sources, and objectives, missions as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, takes roll call vote.
I leary.
I read.
I link.
I Warren Dorf. Okay, um, four point four, F Y twenty-two, budget assumptions and priorities.
All right, as you can imagine, um, this year is a very different year than all other years. Normally, we would have had a Congress of Councils in October and been well on our way to planning the F Y twenty-two budget. We do plan to have a Congress of Councils in January, but we do need to move forward with some budget assumptions. These budget assumptions are a little bit different, we have to begin somewhere in this process. So, uh, at the very beginning of the packet, with the assumptions, I've added a new section that's labeled assume a return to all in-person learning in F Y twenty-two. In order to do that, uh, we really do not know what the state budget or what kind of grants will be available if we're still dealing with COVID, but we need to anticipate continued P P E and cleaning supplies. We need to target class sizes of twenty-two or less, and maybe less than that in certain buildings, depending on the classroom space. Anticipate three-foot spacing classroom requirements, assess new teacher needs to meet class size targets. We're going to assume no remote teaching programs at this point in time, I'm not sure we can continue to have a remote program and an in-person program simultaneously, but again, these may be guidelines that, you know, are clarified as we move forward. And we need to assess space requirements for classrooms, lunch, and buses. Other than that, the majority of the assumptions around personnel, other contracts, uh, special education, energy inflation, receipts and grants are very similar to what we've done in the past. This will allow us to begin doing some planning for next year so we can bring some information to Congress of Councils. We need to get our arms around this very early on. And, you know, we really have no idea what F Y twenty-two will bring, but we need to have a sense of what we need.
Um, Matt, so if, as we're planning, and I know nobody wants to hear this, but like if we had to do hybrid again in September, or for some part of that year, all in is going to be the most expensive, so if we budget for that, anything less than that, we work down there from a financial perspective, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be, okay. And so you don't think we put in remote at this time?
It, it's, it's too difficult to try and assess that, and it would be very, I mean, you know, I can only react to what we are required to do regulation and policy-wise by the commissioner, and that is a requirement this year. It is a very difficult one to meet when you're trying to be hybrid, let alone all in person. So I have to begin somewhere, but, you know, if we continue to have the regulation and policy oversight that we are dealing with now and need to include that, again, all in person would be the most expensive route compared to those others.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, is the timeline going to be any different? I know we have the Congress of Councils in January, but is anything being said, you know, as far as, you know, town meeting and things in March, you know?
So, um, in, in your correspondence area of the packet, we do have the timeline that we proposed earlier. I have not been informed of anything different, we still need to basically hit our benchmarks for a town meeting in May. Whether or not there needs to be additional town meetings or anything else along those lines, you know, that's something that the town administrator will have to make decisions upon.
Good.
Okay, any other questions around the budget assumptions? All right, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adopt for budget planning purposes, the F Y twenty-two budget assumptions and priorities as proposed.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
I Kane.
I read.
Link.
I Warren Dorf, okay. Now we're going to go to five point one, public comment, non-agenda items. For those people that may be tuning in to hear about the tran- uh, transition plan to all in, that is on our agenda, that's in the F Y twenty-one updates and adjustments. So, public comment, non-agenda items wouldn't be the time to ask any questions or have comments. The time to do that will be at public comment, agenda items. That being said, and if anybody does have a comment, you're going to raise your hand and we'll unmute you and then you need to say your name and address. So it is, so I guess I'll give a few seconds to see if anybody has any comments on non-agenda items.
Hey, we do have one individual requesting at this time. I will allow this individual to talk, and then as soon as you complete your question, we will put you back on mute so you can hear your answer.
Hi, it's Eileen Corbett. Um, so my question is for Warren about student activity fees from last year, when, when we can expect to see a refund on those? And I don't think there's an agenda item for that, so that's my question.
Okay.
Um, at, at this time refunds, you're talking about refunds for student activity, like student, not student government, because that wouldn't have a fee.
No, specifically, it was the costume rental for Frozen. That was a hundred bucks or something like that, so I think folks are waiting for that to be returned.
Was that the middle school?
Yes.
Is that a middle school program?
Yes.
So, um, the principal, so, uh, I, I will have a conversation with Derek, with Mr. Schultz, regardless, because that money was, was put through a student activity account, I believe, so I would have to go take a look at that. So frozen costume rentals, I, I will, and this is Eileen Corbett.
That's right, I, I know, I've called Derek several times and they, I think, just keep telling us that they're working on it, so.
Okay, then I, I will look into that.
Thanks, Warren.
Warren, is it maybe because it has to be released during these, you know, because we just voted a lot of those activity accounts? Maybe it's that.
I, I think that it's probably better for Warren to take a look at it, Mary Lou.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Out of my expertise on those details.
We have another individual, one more, please.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please give us your name and address?
Sure, I'm Heather Vanderwald, I'm at seventy-seven Meadowbrook.
Okay.
I guess I'm a little concerned that we're talking budget-wise for hybrid for twenty twenty-one in September and for twenty twenty-two. Given that surrounding towns are already resuming in-person for at-risk like K and one. And where we're saying things like, you know, the budget needs to be the most for in-person, but let's all remember that in-person learning should be the standard.
Okay, this is, we're planning for F Y twenty-two. So this is just budget planning, and we're just the beginning of the process of that, so those are just assumptions that we start into for next year's planning, that, so this is just the beginning stages. So, thank you. Do we have anyone else, or we? All right, all set?
I just wanted to note that we, we have been, like you were going to mention too, but you have already mentioned, but the F Y twenty-one updates and adjustments, that's when we're talking about.
Yeah.
All of the learning styles. Okay, so that they know that's when we're going to talk about it.
I, I did say that, so.
Yeah, at, at every meeting, Matt goes, gives us an update about what's going on at every meeting.
It's been on agenda for a while now.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, all right, we'll move on. Five point two, student government representative. Hi, Paul, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Sorry about my name.
That's all right.
Mine, but, um.
Can you look there?
Yeah. So at our last all student government meeting, we talked about giving back and showing appreciation. So each class is a committee, my senior class is focusing on teachers and showing appreciation to them. So we're all brainstorming ideas to show appreciation while being safe with all the COVID. Um, and also the P T O is looking for ideas to give back to students. We're brainstorming for those. One cool idea that's been discussed so far is maybe a holiday lights drive-through because of how successful the Halloween drive-through was in October. And then also, we're safely starting to collect for things like Toys for Tots, Toys for Tots and Katie's Closet, which we're focused on, give it back to the less fortunate.
Very good.
Great.
Great ideas.
Yeah, great ideas, thank you, Paul.
All right, five point three, F Y twenty-one updates and adjustments. Matt, I know you have some updates for us particularly involving Governor Baker's recent statement, statement.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, it's important to update the committee on, you know, several topics about, you know, hybrid and full in-person learning and some of the things that have happened on the state level and some of the benchmarks that we are continuously looking at in terms of trying to get back to in-person, and I think we're also going to need to inform the community about a lot of these pieces. You know, as I begin, you know, this, this is going to take some time, so I hope people are prepared to listen, but, um, I want to recognize, you know, without question, the very, very hard work that our teachers have been putting in in the hybrid situation, as well as our students, parents and administration. I think it can go without saying that everyone is, is working harder than they ever have in these constraints, and we would all love to be in person, but there are some certain realities that we have to follow from the state policy-wise and regulation-wise that we're currently provided. And we're dealing with those as best we can. I think that, you know, there's, there's a belief that we can meet all needs and, and the reality is, in, in this situation, we cannot, and, and there are sacrifices and limits to what we can and can't do, and I hope to highlight some of those things and provide people with information to consider as we move forward. Currently, we are in a hybrid learning situation, and, and we have different levels at the elementary, the middle and high school, and working very, very hard to make those work as best we can, and, you know, if we can make small adjustments along the way, we will do that. But we always have our eye at, you know, what will it take to return to full in-person? And what kind of things do we need to achieve to get to that situation? Unfortunately, the COVID nineteen virus is currently increasing at a very, very high rate, similar to what we were in April, and while we hope to provide more in-person learning, at this time, it's kind of contradictory, but we will need to continue to monitor how the virus affects our ability to instruct students, especially over the winter months, and, and, you know, really keep track of all those pieces. We have continuously monitored our ability to begin in-person learning, there are many important benchmarks to clear if this is to be logistically feasible. An increase in interest for in-person learning coincided with Governor Baker's change of the state metric system and request for more in-person learning if logistically feasible. Governor Baker highlighted that he did not want districts to move to remote learning unless it was a last resort, when there is evidence of transmission in school communities. There has been concern that districts would move to remote learning with the return of college students combined with the Thanksgiving break and kind of anticipating an increase rather than realizing an increase within their school communities. Baker explained that a half of the nine hundred and fifty thousand public school students are currently doing all their learning remotely, that's everything remote. Noel is a part of the other half that is providing in-person instruction combined in a hybrid setting. Baker suggested that, um, under the new rules, schools and communities designated as gray, green and yellow are expected to have students fully learning fully in-person if feasible, and should alternate students between days of in-person and remote learning only if there's no other way to meet the health and safety guidelines. Um, in reaction to this, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, the M A S S, uh, M A S S, um, put out a full statement and, you know, fully acknowledges that we want to move toward in-person learning. Like to read an excerpt from M A S S and what how they addressed Governor Baker on this. It goes as follows, clearly the words of if feasible are key to any possible return to in-person options. Based on the guidance provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the decision of the administration to have each school district determine its return to school plan during the better part of the spring and summer, time was spent by local districts to develop plans, negotiate agreements with local unions and abide by health and safety protocols. While superintendents have been strong advocates for as much in-school learning as possible, there are several realities which require the governor's help before many months of planning can be altered. First, convincing evidence that less than six feet of distance is safe, we need medical experts to explicitly coalesce around safe distancing which allows for increased student capacity in classroom. Second, school bus transportation must allow for significantly larger student bus capacity, we are limited right now with bus availability and a significant cost to expand bus usage. Help with collective bargaining provisions, since there is no way to make unilateral changes in previous agreements with local unions. Superintendents have already negotiated extensively on return to school plans. M A S S and superintendents across Massachusetts would welcome any statewide efforts to address these issues that are beyond a local community's power to impact. With that assistance and support, we look forward to time when more in-school learning is both feasible and achievable. Overall, the state has determined that education will be determined at the local level and must follow all prescribed safety protocols. The safety protocols have not changed except for the metrics setting for virus spread in communities. That was the statement from M A S S. So now in terms of Noel specifically, there are several benchmarks that must be examined that would enable, that would enable us to return to in-person learning. At a high level, clarity surrounding budgets must be resolved. First, the state of Massachusetts has not approved an F Y twenty-one budget for municipalities. The budget is currently in the Senate and will hopefully be resolved before winter break. Second, once the state budget is set, the town of Noel will be able to assess the budget set at town meeting. The Noel Public Schools budget was reduced by seven hundred thousand dollars at town meeting in July. The Noel Public Schools was also required to reduce this budget by an additional five hundred and seven thousand due to revenue losses in the full-day kindergarten program, pre-K reduction in numbers and transport, transportation reduction in ridership fees. All those directly impacted our budget. Um, we reduced our budget in the following ways, we did not replace an assistant principal, we moved an assistant principal from the middle school to the vinyl school, and our athletic director at the high school is doing both athletic, direct, is both athletic director and assistant principal at the middle school. We cut proposed, we cut proposed kindergarten aides at the elementary for aides, we cut a proposed high school music teacher, we cut a proposed additional bus so that we could have eight buses at both the coal and the vinyl. All administrators and central office employees are currently taking a zero percent increase. Teachers are also taking two furlough days. Retirement and long-term sub-actuals have been incorporated into that, into those numbers, and we reduced several supply areas drastically throughout the budget. If budgets are partially restored, we will need to look at restoring some of the cuts that we have already made. The third area that is the most important for us to focus on in terms of budgeting is what the state has called the CARES, the CARES Act, in which money was provided to towns in order to address COVID nineteen requirements. Plymouth County, the county that Noel is in, is authorizing that grant on its own outside of the Department of Education. This grant expires on December thirty-first. The Noel Public Schools have submitted roughly nine hundred thousand dollars to cover expenses related to COVID nineteen through December thirty-first. If the submissions are not approved, we will need to work with the town to cover these expenses. Although these expenses have been submitted, we have not heard what has been approved or not approved. You know, if they're not approved, those will come back to the school and town budgets. If the grant is not extended or replenished, we may lose the personnel support we have received to run buildings in order to meet guidelines or regulations provided by the state. This is a significant benchmark that will inform our decisions moving forward. This could be a significant hit to the overall town budget. Information regarding state budget and Plymouth County grant funds will hopefully be resolved between Thanksgiving and winter break. Additional funds for the second half of the year may depend upon federal and or state additional grant funding. To be clear, these are the things that we have submitted in that nine hundred thousand dollar request to the grant that is outside of our budget. We have employed eleven COVID support aides, we are not using daily subs, we need to use support aides to help cover classes where teachers are quarantining to help with drop-off, pickup, lunch hallways and, and supporting students throughout all four buildings. We hired two COVID support custodians, and we have added additional overtime for our regular custodians to meet the needs of cleaning throughout the buildings. We have two part-time floating nurses as well. We purchased new servers for remote learning throughout the district. We purchased additional technology devices for people needing a device learning at home. The six through twelve G C V S remote learning program is, the first semester has been completely funded by the Plymouth County Grant, we'll have to figure out what's going to happen second half of the year. C O two sensors have been placed into every single classroom to help regulate and let us know if there's a high level of C O two or, you know, to open up the vents to allow more fresh air in. All unit vents have been inspected and repaired where necessary. All P P E and cleaning supplies in the seamless summer food service salaries are also included in this nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, hopefully we'll know information regarding this by January first, we have not heard anything regarding the money we have submitted, that was all submitted and laid out by October thirty-first of this year. And we're working very closely with the town administrator to learn not only what the schools will receive, but what the town will receive from these grant accounts regarding COVID.
Right, Matt, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Um, so, nine hundred thousand dollars is for all of that stuff through December thirty-first?
Correct.
So any, if we kept all of that stuff, we're going to take additional costs for the second half of the school year and we'll find, have to find a way to pay for that as well?
Correct.
Okay, so, and if we don't get this nine hundred thousand, or we only get a portion of it, then we're going to need the town to help us figure out how to pay for that, and then we will have to figure out how to pay to keep these things for the second half of the year.
That is correct.
And we've heard nothing, not, not about any of this stuff, has the town heard anything either?
So I, I talked weekly with Peter Morin. You know, he has made it very clear that while the state has certified some budget stuff and it's gone through the houseways and means, You know, he has made it very clear that while the state has certified some budget stuff and it's gone through the houseways and means. It's now in the Senate budget and then it goes to conference and then it goes to the governor for signature. So it's completely unprecedented that we do not have an actual state budget at this time. It's usually done by July first. Obviously, the state was very concerned about revenues and projections and all those pieces and have taken the time to. Try and set their budget in a way that's respectful and they have dipped into their, what's called a rainy day fund. But until that is officially approved, the town of Noel. Can't make any adjustments to the budget it submitted at town meeting. At which point in time, you know, you know, Peter Moran will figure out what the town can and can't do based upon what the state has done. So that that could be helpful to us, but. It may need to restore some of the things we've lost and it may need to take on some of the additional things we've put in place just to deal with the. Safety protocols that we've been dictated to by the state.
And we've gotten any indication from Plymouth County on when they plan to? Are they just inundated with requests that that's the problem or?
So Plymouth County is dealing with all Plymouth County towns and municipalities. So this is requests from fire. From police departments, from departments of health, from you know, every town department and every school community. And you know, it was, we have applied for what we were. Basically designated that Noel would receive as a whole community. And the town has put in its request as well. And so while we have more that we could submit to a grant at this time just related to COVID. It is more than that nine hundred thousand, so we have to wait to find out if. There is more funds or if there's replenishment or if there's a continuation to the second half of the year, but the deadline is. December thirty-first at this time.
All right, thank you.
Our next set of benchmarks related to feasibility study that we presented in our district reopening plan in August. This can be found on the website under district reopening plan. It's the very first area. I want to take some time to review the bulletin information from that document. And update, you know, where we are in our most recent assessment for each of those bullets. So um. Our in-person feasibility study revealed, I'll go through this and say what it said and what the update is. So the first bullet from the study said, we could place twenty-two to twenty-three students in a standard classroom if using a three-foot distancing. Unfortunately, this would remove all teaching supplies and other furniture from the rooms. We've updated this and have much, much better sense of what fits and what doesn't fit. So based upon our current understanding, we could fit roughly twenty-two students per classroom at vinyl, at the vinyl school, the middle school and the high school. And about twenty students at the coal school. Of course, there is some variability because we have some classrooms that are either large or small within that and we'd have to deal with that with these teacher. The most important thing to realize is that the coal school has a unique build that in the classrooms. There was an extra wall built into the classroom so that the students could have their hooks. For their jackets and lunches and those sort of things. Whereas the vinyl, it was set up in a different corner, so the coal has less square feet than all of the other three buildings. So even at twenty-two feet and twenty feet, this would create a difficult classroom environment. At three feet. Distancing, that's three feet between where the students sit, not from the size of the desks. So the actual ability to walk between the desks get reduced gets reduced to about a foot and a half, just a little over two feet. Usually our desks can be grouped together allowing for space and movements. We'll put like. Four desks together or six desks together throughout the classroom, which provides a lot of nice space for people to move around in. But with the three-foot distancing, there's virtually no room for students and teachers to move around and they all need to face the same direction. At six feet, our teachers have been able to interact frequently with the students in their classrooms. They can move around. They can point things out. Whereas at three feet, they'd really be regulated strictly to the form of the classroom. The six-foot distancing has enabled us to clarify potential close contacts. At three-foot close contacts would increase substantially, including the teacher. Guidance round of close contact defined at within six feet for fifteen minutes cumulatively has not changed. In our, in our previous summer study, we determined that we would need to establish class sizes of eighteen or less per room to maintain a productive learning environment. And to achieve that, we would need to reassign six educators at the elementary level as classroom teachers and hire two additional elementary teachers. So to update you on that information. It is absolutely not possible to move to eighteen students per classroom. We would need to hire a significant number of teachers and we do not have additional classrooms to put those teachers into. Currently, we have reassigned two elementary teachers and two specialist coordinators to teach the four sections of the Remote Academy at the elementary level. At the vinyl school, we only have three teachers teaching kindergarten and three teachers teaching second grade. Usually we have four teachers per grade at each elementary level, grade level. We may need one or two more teachers in the Remote Academy if we choose the full in-person model. It's important to note that just under eighty families or eighty students. Have been placed into the elementary Remote Academy. These are families that felt that it was not safe to return to the hybrid model. That's eighty families that have not returned, that have entered the Remote Academy that we provided at the elementary level. If we were to go to full in-person, we may have more families choose. The remote model rather than return to full in-person learning and. Obviously, we would have to see what that looked like. We need to get that information and we'd have to see what we could or could not. Achieve in that situation. Currently, we would need to add at least one classroom teacher to teach a grade one, two split at the vinyl to meet class sizes. At at under that that twenty-two benchmark. Of course, at both schools, all of these different changes. Students assigned to their current teacher may change in any in-person scenario. As we move to possible remote and leveling of classes that may be higher or lower. So that we can fit students comfortably into the classroom in-person environment. We had assessed that full-day kindergarten would not be offered to families in the summer. We have not offered full-day kindergarten this year. If we move to full in-person, the kindergarten program could continue in its current form, which is the hybrid half-days. Kindergarten students are receiving their full academic program four days per week. Obviously, Wednesdays are a remote day currently. And so the kindergarten students are receiving their academic allocation in the current model. Continuing this model would also help with potential bus and or lunch logistics if we were to move. If we were to return to in-person learning for the rest of the grades at the elementary level. At the middle school, we originally believed we would need to hire two teachers and ask four educators to teach an additional academic class. Outside of their specialty to meet those class sizes of eighteen. Currently, at the middle school, the class size averages are feasible because of the number of students attending the G C V S Remote Academy. The number may increase or decrease at the change of the semester. So right now, we have enrolled twenty-four fam- twenty-four students into the G C V S program at the middle school. And that semester ends between January twenty-fifth and January twenty-ninth. We will need to find out how many families would like to continue with that program. And if we are going to consider going to a full in-person. And there are additional families that would prefer to be remote, we would have to also look at signing them up for G C V S. And we'll have to learn a lot more of that information.
Stop you for one second?
Yes.
If if um. Because if we go remote, I mean, sorry, not remote, if you went full in-person or. People just simply decide they want to go remote in January. They want their kids to go remote to that program. We can't, that people can't jump into that program like in March if you have to start at a semester and finish a semester, correct?
Correct. We do contract with them. They do offer synchronous and asynchronous classes. There are some programs out there that we're looking at that we could potentially do. Self-paced modules as well, which G C V S also offers. But at the middle school and high school level, the classes currently are on a quarter schedule. And a semester schedule and that's, that's the same with the remote programs that are out there. So once you begin one, you can't really jump back and forth because. It's the school system is paying for the student to be remote and. Moving students that are remote back into the classroom, we were trying to set numbers becomes highly problematic, so. We need to have all this information and analyze it before any changes are made.
And then you just remind us what the cost is for that program per student? It doesn't have to be exact, but just rough.
So just in general, for the thirty-six families, thirty thirty-six students. That are attending G C B at G C V S twenty-fourth middle and twelve at the high school. It's costing us about roughly ninety thousand dollars for that program. Again, that those numbers could increase or decrease. And we just would not know until we meet with those families and talk to other families who may want to go into that.
Thank you.
All right. So we will need to assess this information in the coming weeks. We will need to let G C V S know where we stand with enrolling students for the second half of the year. Probably sometime around January first. If we return to full to in-person learning, some students may need to be moved to other classes based upon class sizes. It's a situation where obviously if students go remote, it opens up, if people come back, it closes things down. But we have situations where we have, you know, an average of four classes that is at nineteen and a quarter average. Which means some classes could be twenty-four and some classes could be sixteen. We really have to sit down and analyze each one of those and that would require us to move students. From the teachers that currently with to other sections to make sure we balance those. And ideally, you do that at a quarter break, you know, at some point during the year or a time that made sense to make those moves. Over the summer, we assumed that at the high school level, we would limit our programming to essential subjects. Allowing some students to take some courses through virtual learning and encourage dual enrollment for others. So after, you know, all of our enrollments and our students are in, currently the high school is in the same position as the middle school. There are some classes that are over twenty-two and they would need to be located to larger spaces. Again, the actual number of students attending T C S Remote Academy will be an important benchmark if we make changes. Currently, there are only twelve students attending that program at the high school level. And once again, some student schedules may be forced to change if we do return to full in-person. Just to make sure we're not, we can meet that three-foot distancing in the classrooms. In the summer, we assumed that. Full in-person would result in the loss of some advanced placement classes. And possible capping of elective, some of our larger classes would be scheduled on larger performance spaces. And five additional course sections would be needed as well. Currently, we should be able to overcome this at this time. We cannot lose any of our classroom teachers in any capacity if this is to work at the high school level. Over the summer, we believe that at all levels, lunch would require permanent seating setups in the cafeterias and gymnasiums. To allow for six-foot distancing. We believe we would need to purchase additional seating for lunch and we would be required to hire two to four additional custodians to manage both lunch areas. In each building. Lunch, as a current assist assessment, it continues to be a significant problem. We must maintain the six-foot distancing. We are able to do that in the hybrid and only use our cafeterias at the middle and high school. We are not eating in the gyms at this time. With full in-person, we would need to access the gymnasiums for lunch. Currently, desk furniture is a tremendous issue for us. We are using classroom desks to support appropriate seating in the cafeteria. These would need to be returned to the classroom. And then we would need to find appropriate seating in the cafeterias and the gymnasiums to replace those desks at the six-foot, six-foot mark. A full accounting of the number of desks needed for this type of transition will need to be analyzed and purchases will need to be made. I'm not really sure where that that funding is going to come from at this time. The use of the gymnasiums for lunch creates logistical problems for gym classes and after-school athletics. If it is possible to break down and set up the gyms on a daily basis, we may need to hire those additional custodial staff that we haven't done. We have hired some to just to clean up during lunch and in other areas of the building. But we would need more for setting up the gymnasiums.
Matt, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So the six feet at lunch, that can't go down to three feet. Is that because they don't have masks while they're eating or does that, can that go down to three feet?
No, that is regulated to remain at six feet. Absolutely must must stay there or taking off a mask and having your lunch. And there's really no way around that at all. Fortunately, at the elementary, the elementary level. It is set up in such a way that, you know, we're able to get students lunch who sign up for it, but they're having their lunch at home and not using the cafeteria, so. We haven't even trouble shot that at the elementary level at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Transportation guidelines allow for twenty twenty-four students per bus. We usually average between sixty-five and seventy. In an in-person environment, we determined over the summer that we would need to eliminate busing for all high school students. This would allow us to use the fifteen buses we have at the middle school and at each elementary school. The elementary start school start times would need to be staggered. We would begin by busing students K through six outside of two miles and then have a rolling enrollment if space remained. We would be unable to contract and pay for the number of buses to serve the community in its current form. That's what we realized in the summertime and you know, families worked with us through surveys and we really have been able to. Meet family need for those who've requested to have a bus. They have a bus in the hybrid. But if we were to move all in-person, then the buses become a highly significant issue. And I'll talk a little bit more about them later as well.
Yeah. The, is there any wait lists for families that wanted to get on the bus? Are they still all being met, the ones that wanted to get on the bus?
Right now, I root, to my knowledge, everyone who wanted to have a bus has one at this point in time. And you know, if someone finds a need for buses, it is available.
Okay.
We also anticipate, we anticipate in the summer that we would need to hire additional floating school nurses to support our building nurses and some. And to substitute during a nurse's absence. Through COVID nineteen funds, we have added two part-time floating nurses, but these funds do expire on twelve thirty-one. So there's a few other areas to be examined.
Can I stop you for one second and go back to the buses? So if, and maybe, maybe this, if this is coming, let me know, but. So if, so if we had people that were, you know, we could work out the buses and most people were willing to drive, what, what does that do to? The traffic at the schools?
So if we were to keep the buses the way they are now, where we have fifteen buses for the high school, fifteen for the middle school. And then seven for the coal and eight for the vinyl. We could with, we could bring both cohorts of the high school onto those fifteen buses because we only. Drive about two hundred and fifty to three hundred students to the high school. So that's, you know, pretty much right at, you know, twenty students per bus. There may be some difficulties there, but we could do that. The middle school would probably be a little bit tighter and there may be some students that need to come off, but. We're in pretty good shape with the fifteen buses at the middle school. Obviously, we can do the sixth grade and we're doing a good portion of seventh and eighth grade. But there may be some families that we might need to ask if they could drive. The middle school seems to be able to handle. Some of the driving. If we added fifty more pickups and drop-offs, then I'm sure we would have more people on the street. But at the elementary level, this is a significant problem. With seven or eight buses, you know, we can bus between a hundred and fifty and. Two hundred students at coal and vinyl. If we're all in. That means we're going to have, you know, close to two hundred students that will need to be driven if we don't go to fifteen buses per school. Right now, we are servicing about a hundred drivers per day at the coal and vinyl. With the new routes we've designed, the coal goes around the back instead of where the buses used to go. And that gives this, the parents' ability to line up and drop off and exit. At the vinyl, we reopened the access road and changed the direction of flow of traffic so we could just get even just twenty-five more. Cars in there, so we're not backing up on the old Oak and Bucket. But if we're going to add another hundred drivers in that situation. Both High Street and Old Oak and Bucket would be completely flooded.
Okay, thank you.
I also just mentioned if you had fifteen buses at the elementary, but how would you, we only have fifteen buses.
So right now, the elementaries have the same start time. So we provide seven buses at coal and eight buses at the vinyl. So if we were to put, if we were to eliminate buses at the high school. We would have a run for the middle school. We would move. One of the two elementaries to an eight o'clock start time and the other one to a nine o'clock start time, so they would be. At different start times so that we could have the buses, so we, we can do three routes. So that's how we get the fifteen buses at both schools.
So it's back to the old days where the elementary would be off and then high school, there would be no busing in that scenario, correct?
Correct.
All used for the elementary in the middle.
So for families that had to have busing there at the high school level, there wouldn't be a choice, right?
Right. And we are not required to bus students at the high school level.
I mean, seventh and up, we're not required, seventh and up, we're not required.
Correct.
But we've never not done that.
Yeah, at a time where things are are tight for people, adding another thing that makes it.
And to be completely honest, we, we don't want to encourage carpooling at this time.
Right.
Learning environments, you know, currently, teachers are meeting the needs of hybrid, remote, and students that are quarantining because they may have symptoms, they may be a close contact, you know, you know, for whatever reason, they have to be outside of school for a long period of time, fourteen to ten days. This is extremely difficult and time consuming. Teachers are working harder than ever on behalf of their students. A return to in-person learning could be helpful, except for the needs of quarantining students. If cases continue in or outside of school, more students will need to quarantine since we will no longer be in six-foot spacing. This could could create many logistical problems moving forward. The number of students and teachers that have needed to quarantine for a significant amount of time this year is as follows. So these are students and staff that have either been identified as a close contact and been out for fourteen days, you know, had tested positive or out for fourteen days or had symptoms and, you know, had to be out for ten days minimum. These are people that we've worked with, with our nurses and, you know, have come in contact with COVID nineteen. There's no question that COVID nineteen has reached us more from outside the school than inside the school. I think that is a fair assessment. But the level of time needed for families to quarantine because of possible exposure or symptoms is is a tremendous difficulty in the current environment. So currently at the high school, since the beginning of school until today, we've had a hundred and fifty-three students that have had to quarantine for a significant period of time and we've had eighteen staff. At the middle school, we've had sixty-seven students and seven staff. At the vinyl, we've had eighty-three students and fifteen staff. At the coal, we've had fifty students and eight staff.
Can I stop you for a second? So let me understand that. So if we, if we go all in and we're at three feet, what we're, what we could be at bigger risk for, not i- is if with this con- close contact, you, because now they're closer and they're not taking the six feet, and I assume the teachers, will the teachers in those instances still be six feet from the students in the front of the classroom or are they also now closer if we have the kids all in?
Well, ideally, we would try and keep the six-foot spacing, but, you know, depending upon the classroom, obviously, if it's, you know, we've got eighteen kids, we know we can keep the six feet at the front of the classroom, but as soon as we go over that benchmark, it becomes a little bit more difficult. You know, we've been working with the Board of Health and we, we have set up seating charts and all those sort of things. So if a student in the back corner, i- you know, is positive during school, then, you know, we're only re- quarantining close contact was probably the three students closest. If the person's in the middle of the room, that could be up to nine, eight students that are quarantining. For the front of the room, it could include the teacher. And it also is a matter of, you know, what's going on in that classroom? I- is there movement? Are people getting up and down to go to the bathroom or other areas? You know, what is the proximity? Is the, is the teacher having, you know, a conference with the student in the front of the classroom for, you know, a period of time, even though they're wearing masks, they're just trying to work on something together? There's a lot of different things that come into play that we have not had to, you know, really drill down on and deal with at the six-foot distance. And, you know, the reality for a lot of schools that have needed to close down really isn't about the number of students that have the, have come in contact. But when you lose a certain number of teachers, that becomes a problem. And, you know, if you're talking about, you know, the high school and middle school where students have several teachers, you know, one case could put several students out as close contacts as well as teachers. And then that's where the COVID aids would need to go in and you know, those, we still need to work with the kids that are quarantining at home. I- it's a logistical nightmare.
I mean, because it's where, again, like it's where we've seen certain schools having to go out for two weeks. It's off, it's sometimes because so many teachers are quarantining, we don't have this, they, those schools haven't had the staff to be, to be in session, right, or in person?
Yeah, there's a combination, the two things that have stood out are you don't have enough staff to be in person or you just, you don't have the information you need to know if they're spread or not.
Thanks.
So secondarily, as, as a major significant learning benchmark, we will need to survey families in regards to continuation of remote learning needs. We'll need to survey them on whether or not they would opt for remote learning if we were to, if we were able to return in-person learning. We are currently required to provide a remote learning program to families that require it. This guidance has not changed and is the most difficult guidance we really are faced with. At the elementary level, we were able to do this by moving staff around for roughly eighty students. These classes are mostly split grade classrooms. So we do have a singleton as a kindergarten, but then we have a one, two, a two, three, and a four, five is the way that whole thing kind of has worked out. If this number increases, we will need.
You can make a sandwich too. I did buy turkey yesterday. Well.
Derek, I think you need to mute. These classes are mostly split by grade level. If this number increases, we will need to know how many students would need to be serviced. Only then would we be able to determine if we can move faculty to meet the need and maintain appropriate class sizes. At the six to twelve level, we, as stated, we chose to partner with GCBS for our students requiring remote learning. It is simply not possible to create an internal remote academy for grades six through twelve. These are not individual classrooms taught by one teacher. These are subject-driven sections and it just is, and it's a pure impossibility. Every teacher is needed in the classroom. Remote families can choose between synchronous learning or self-paced module learning within GCBS. At the six to twelve level, we will need this information before winter break so we can assign remote students for the second semester. It is important to understand that while we, while there are families that are unable to send their children to school because of COVID nineteen, there are also teachers that may be unable to work in a full in-person environment. We will need to determine if we can replace staff that are unable to work. Once again, this will have a tremendous impact on our budget. We did have some students, some teachers that opted not to return this year and we were able to replace them over the summer and we worked proactively with that. If we were to shift to an in-person situation, there probably, I can guess that there would be some, some teachers that would have significant concerns regarding their own health or the health of loved ones and may opt not to be here. It is extremely difficult to find a long-term certified sub in the middle of a school year right now. We will need to survey families in regards to the need of the buses as we've spoken about. Kirsten, you asked about this and I pretty much covered what would happen at the.
One quick question back to the GCBS. What would happen at the secondary level if we just had, because I know before, when we were talking about going in hybrid, there was many families who were kind of on the edge then, trying to decide whether to make the decision between remote and hybrid and decided to go hybrid. What if there's a, you know, an outpouring of people who want to go to GCBS? A, do we, will we even have the spots? But B, how do we afford all this?
That, that is the big question, Allison. I mean, the reality is, is that we probably had, you know, forty or sixty people that were on the fence and I moved the full in-person. You know, those, those people would choose that and I don't, I really don't know where we have the budget for that unless there's a grant replenishment or a extension of the grants in the second half of the year. I, I can't answer that question. I don't have the funds and I'm not sure how to do it.
Matt, at the high school, if we did go fully in, I think you talked about it, you know, one of the last meetings. You know, according to the state guidelines and safety, it would be something of over a million dollars just for that, was it? For the high school?
I'm not sure where you're, you're getting that, Mary Lou. I, I mean, right now, I would have to go through and add up some of the additional pieces here or whether they can come from within. The reality is, is we've submitted nine hundred thousand dollars for COVID support. Some of those things will be taken care of, but some of the positions we would need to continue. And if I, you know, did have people that were unable to continue and I had to go out and get additional teaching staff, there could be some costs to that as well. Let me see, where am I? So my recommendations and timelines. So first and foremost, we need to receive concrete information on the state budget, the town budget, and the Plymouth County Grant Fund or CARES Act. We hope to have this between Thanksgiving and winter break. We need to survey families in regards to remote learning and busing requirements. This should happen in December before winter break. Once we have the budget information and remote learning information, we can begin to tackle the logistics around class sizes, desks, lunch, personnel needs for post twelve thirty-one. In terms of a hierarchy of needs, based upon the current logistics and educational requirements, I believe that the high school is the closest to being able to return to full in-person learning. If only the high school returned to full in-person and the middle and elementary remained in the hybrid, we could maintain our current busing practices. The additional complexities of the high school program, varied individual course scheduled, schedules, more content, specific disciplines like a word language, courses that are only offered once like a biology and graduation slash college requirements make the high school an in-person high priority if it is feasible. The high school schedule is more complex for students and teachers than at the other school levels. These students are closest to moving on to careers and or college. High school students can adapt to a more physically structured classroom setting more easily than younger students, enabling the required desk arrangements to remain productive. The restrictions of the desks at the middle and high school, at the middle and elementary schools will be a learning environment difficulty. The middle school would be my second focus area. Currently, their schedule allows students to see their teacher every other day, allowing them a continuity of learning the high school cannot provide currently. And finally, the elementary schools have a significant, the elementary schools have significant logistical problems with lunch and busing. Currently, elementary students are receiving their academic classes in person on a daily basis, except for Wednesdays. They still are receiving it on Wednesdays, but just not in person. The classroom configuration at three feet in the elementary schools would create a restrictive and difficult learning environment for students. Some students may need to be moved to another teacher or split into split-grade configurations for in-person instruction in order to continue to meet our guidelines. So, you know, this is just trying to be informative and be and provide information for people to consider a- as we try and make decisions and, you know, work collaboratively, collaboratively as much as possible about what is possible. You know, I, I, a lot of districts are trying to figure out the return to full in-person. And there are certain areas where people have been successful with certain class sizes because of, you know, the number of people remote or the size of their classes. But, um, right now, a very, very, I don't, I'm not sure there's one district that's in full in-person in the Commonwealth. I do know that, you know, the, the districts that are fully remote is, is highly frustrating. And I know that our, our, our staff is, is working extremely hard to find ways to make this work as, as best, as best they can. And, you know, just hoping to provide more information to the community as we go through this process.
Thank you, Matt. All right, for the rest of the school committee, you have any questions? Anybody have questions? I'll start with Christina.
I, yes, so I have a couple. One, so if, for instance, we were full in-person at this point and we just use the numbers we currently have for people who have had to quarantine either because they tested positive, had symptoms or were close contacts, let's say at the high school, if it's a hundred fifty-three students and I think you said eighteen staff?
Eighteen.
Yep.
So if we were just to, to kind of like grab a, a number to multiply that by and say we're doubling the students, that would maybe double the amount of people that would have had to quarantine in both of those categories. We get it up to three hundred-ish and just under forty. And I, I assume that because of the flow of traffic and other potential kind of congestion, that might be larger than just doubling the number in terms of how it would increase close contacts if we were full in-person and had the only three-foot distancing. Making this question really confusing, but could we assume that, say, if it were doubled, that would, where would that leave the district in terms of like tolerance for, for even being in school? And I guess one of my big concerns underlying the question is if we were full in-person and all of those things, all of those cases in quarantines just doubled, then does that put us at more risk for having to go full remote sooner and for longer?
I, I think it's, it's an excellent question and I think it's, it's just full of unknowns that I, I can't really project out. You know, I do expect that, you know, right now, we continue to see students and faculty who are needing to quarantine either because of job-related, family-related, you know, someone from outside the system related. And those numbers, as we all know, are drastically increasing. You know, we were at a point where we began the year with maybe three hundred cases a day in Massachusetts. We're now up over two thousand, maybe over two thousand five hundred. So there, there's just more out there right now. And we, we've been told very clearly that we are expected to go through this winter spike in what's out there and we're seeing it. But, you know, it, it's hard to kind of accurately translate what you're saying. I think, you know, if overall case spread in Massachusetts comes back down, then, you know, we probably won't have as many close contacts a- as, as we're seeing currently. If it stays high, I think we continue, we will continue to have it. And I think that we just need to take all that information into consideration as we make our decisions.
Can I just follow up on something that Christina just brought up? But so, so far, when teachers have had to quarantine because they were a close contact, we've been able to manage it sort of in-house and with the, the AIDS and this, you know, the COVID situation that you already set up. What happens if that number doubles? Do we have coverage for that many, you know what I mean? Like what?
You mean the substitutes to cover?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is if we had eighteen already out.
Right.
Of having forty out rather like.
The, the reality is, is that, you know, no matter how many subs you had, if you had that many teachers out, you still would want to have the teachers providing the education. So you're, you're. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Lou.
I was gonna say, that's what like what Kirsten said, of those districts that didn't have the coverage, they had to shut down anyway because they didn't have coverage from the teachers or the substitutes to.
That was the only way they could continue to provide the education to the students in a remote fashion because they couldn't be in person.
And does anybody else have any questions, comments?
I have a question about the capacity at the high school. You talked a lot about, you know, the classrooms at the other schools, but do you have the capacity desk-wise, you know, space-wise to meet the, the standards if they did go fully in?
So, you know, we have a problem throughout the district at every building where there's a combination of individual desks and what we call trapezoid desks. And the trapezoid ta- desks take up more space than the, the individualized desks do. And we've moved the individualized desks into the cafeteria. At the high school, we do have, we purchased some portable, smaller desks and chairs for SAT, PSAT tests that we administer in the gym and cafeteria at times. And at the high school, we could probably access some of those for lunch in the cafeteria and the gym. I don't know if it's enough to handle the lunches, but we definitely need to return all the, the classroom desks that are currently in the cafeteria to the classrooms. And then we'll have to figure out configurations between rooms that have desks and rooms that have trapezoids and how they're set up. Again, the high school, I would say, is probably in the best shape. At the middle school, we would definitely have to buy those things for the cafeteria and for the gyms. And the same goes for the elementaries. We can't use those large fold-out tables to provide the spacing in one direction that we would need.
Matt, I have one more question too, as far as the schools go in general, with the students wearing the masks. Have you been hearing that they've been adhering to? Have you been hearing that they've been adhering to it? There hasn't been difficulty? And with the staff too, or whoever's in the building in general?
So I think the students, the students have done a really, really good job overall when they're in the buildings. And, you know, they do utilize their mask breaks. I do think at the middle and elementary, sometimes the kids, you know, do gravitate to be closer together when they can be. And, you know, so far, we've been able to handle that, especially when you only have eight to twelve students in front of you. It's gonna be a little bit different when we have twenty-two or twenty students in front of us, trying to keep them spread out. Especially if we take a break and go outside, trying to manage that has its own difficulties. I mean, everybody, you know, has a, a, the, the social side is yearning for everyone to be in contact. And we keep being told we can't, and that's just a, a human element that is very difficult. But overall, I would say that when the students are in the building, they're doing a, a very, very good job. And I think overall, they've done a good job in the community, but, you know. You know, you hear stories that, you know, there's groups that are roaming around here and there, but, you know, I, I can't really control that.
And I ask, so we talked about going back to those COVID aids that we have. If we go all in. Are we gonna need more aids to help with like the movement of kids through the hallways and mask breaks and the things that we're doing, because now there's double the students in school? So will we need more aids? And you've mentioned we could potentially need more custodians?
Yeah, so I think that at the lower levels, we would need more support with the students. I think the students are doing a really nice job at the high school, but we would probably need custodial staff at the high school. The only, you know. I, I could see probably adding maybe four more COVID aids so that, you know, if one building went down, we could transfer stu- aids from one building to the next. We have done that already. We have been able to send people to support a different area. But, you know, if, you know, everything went down, it'd be really difficult.
Do we have enough substitutes in general? I mean, that's always been an issue, is getting substitutes just in general, like just having that.
This is a very difficult one.
Right.
Two things to me kind of strike me as blending together to make it more difficult to, in terms of, you know, the three-foot distancing. Making it so that more students and teachers would kind of have to stay put where you said. With the six-foot distancing, we're able to have enough space in the classroom where the teacher might be able to move around and still respect that six-foot distancing guideline. The students have a little bit more freedom to, to move around. So if we were to switch to a three-foot distancing set of guidelines, then you have them more stationary, which I would think is probably drastically less desirable to most students to, to deal with the course of the day. With masks, it probably increases body heat too in the classroom. Just wondering about the level of discomfort that also comes from being at the three-foot distancing. And linking to that, maybe teachers' feelings about being in a classroom where it is, there, there are double the amount of kids. The distancing is much closer and kind of where they, their attitudes and feelings about getting back into the classroom when it's the distancing changes, how, what that, what that's like and.
So Christina, when we set up this summer, and we actually went into classrooms and set the, the chairs up, you know, and mainly focused on the desks. Because at least we could visualize the desks, which were less space than the trapezoids. You know, we, by a square footage calculations, depending on the rooms, you could get twenty-two to twenty-three. And the, the twenty-third was usually tucked around a little bit of a corner. But that was a very restrictive environment. And when we saw that and what it would take to walk up and down an aisle in between. Even if you were getting up to sharpen your pencil, you're bumping into other people's desks. Let alone go in the bathroom or having the class stand up and exit i- in an orderly fashion. We set a limit of eighteen at that time for full in person, just because of the way that looked. I can tell you that we're close, but not all my classes are eighteen, and there's enough over eighteen that I would never be able to make that benchmark. Without adding, you know, a completely additional building to our repertoire. It's just not how education is developed currently. I mean, we, we have some of the smallest class sizes we've had in years, and we're still nowhere near really hitting that eighteen benchmark.
Actually, as a follow-up to what you just said, I'm, I'm wondering, because I've definitely heard parents and students reporting that the smaller class sizes have. You know, while this is certainly not what anybody would want and not perfect, the smaller class sizes have been kind of a silver lining and benefit. In terms of how their kids are feeling and interacting in the classroom, and maybe what they're gaining. I'm wondering if you have any feedback from the teachers about what educational benefits? If, you know, they're seeing from the smaller class sizes, if any, and, and how that affects the current situation.
Well, I don't think there's, I, I mean, there's no question that, you know, focusing on eight to twelve students in front of you, you can get a lot more done in the time that you have there, and you can really elicit feedback and, and learning in that specific environment. I, I think that, you know, there, there are people who are very, very passionate about being all in. There's people that are very passionate about being fully remote. This is very difficult. It's, it's very sobering. You know, there's some very, very clear opinions on this. And, and, you know, we have striven to do our best to make decisions that we can actually implement, given the guidelines and protocols and restrictions that have been placed upon us.
Thank you.
Um, can I, I'm gonna kind of go in a little bit of a different direction. Can I, Kirsten, can I ask you a question? Um, so I am not the person, I think anyone listening who knows me enough knows I am not the person to answer this. That's why I'm asking Kirsten, but um, I hear, we're talking a lot about budget constraints and how difficult the financial piece of this all is. And I hear a lot of people saying, but we pay really high taxes in Norwell. How are we not able to fund this? And I, I am not the right person to answer this, so I thought maybe you could kind of talk to that a bit.
So in Norwell, we get, Matt, and correct me if I'm wrong, we get seventeen point five percent of our budget funded from the state, correct, Matt?
Correct.
Um, so the rest comes from local tax dollars and I, I think around, like the, the average house, I think in Norwell, somewhere around six hundred, six fifty. And the average tax bill on that is somewhere around ten, eleven thousand. So for reference, to educate one student, our per pupil cost is a little over fifteen thousand, if I'm right, right, Matt?
About fifteen-three.
Yeah, fifteen-three. So, um, you know, it was something many years ago when we worked on the override and, and we were trying to figure everything out, how much you realized. You know, as a parent, your taxes just, y- y- you know, a lot of taxes don't even cover one student, let alone if you have two or three. And so again, it is that is where we're drawing our money from. And when we look at the budget, fifty percent of our town budget comes to the schools and fifty percent goes to fire and police and the other stuff, highway, tree and grounds, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, it's just, you know, obviously, when what Matt's told us. The biggest, the, one of the biggest hurdles is budget. And, you know. When you look at what happened at the national level. You know, there was money given to small businesses, there was money given to the airlines, there was money given to a lot of industries, but there wasn't money given to local, local towns or states for education. I mean, there were some of the CARES money, but for us to, you know, enough money to hire teachers and stuff like that, we don't, we haven't really gotten. And like we said, we had to cut our budget by seven hundred thousand, you know, projecting what we thought the state budget would be, which we still don't have those numbers. And then we had to make additional cuts because we're losing fees. So, you know, it's just, it's complicated. And I, I think like Matt's laid out, is we are definitely gonna need help. You know, from that CARES Act, from the town and the state to be able to keep, to keep. I mean, it looks like we're gonna need help to just even keep the hybrid going on that nine hundred thousand. And then we're gonna need more help to, to, to transition back to in-person. And so, you know, I, I mean, Matt's timeline of you know, first we have to see where the money is, is obviously extremely important. Unfortunately, we don't have unlimited funds.
Responding is a deficit, because like you said, we got seven hundred thousand cut. Never mind.
Right. So I mean, we're, we were, you take the seven and five, we were like one, one point two down going into this. And then, you know, we have the nine hundred and hopefully the carrot, we're gonna get that through Plymouth County, but yeah. So, um, I think that is important for people to remember, like that, you know, this is just, it's challenging and you know, where are you gonna find the money? If, if we don't get money from the state or federal government. It's our, it's our own property taxes and we're, you know, I don't think we're in any place that we're gonna be raising those to, to pay for this right now. So we have limited funds and, you know, we share those funds with the town side, so.
I'm wondering if I can ask Cole if he has any insights into some of the things we've been speaking about.
Yeah, well, I think when you're talking about the mask, yes, all the students have been really good with the masks and the mask breaks have actually been huge. I think it's actually benefited our learning. It's kind of like a break. And get refill gifts instead of just drifting off. And then, um, yeah, same thing with the seating. I couldn't imagine. I think it's very tight with just half the class spaced out with that. So I can imagine the whole class there with the three feet, everyone would be bumping. And the trapezoid desks, I don't know if, I know you know what you're talking about with the trapezoid desk, but if you haven't seen one, it's at least like one and a half, like the regular desk, twice the size.
Thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions or comments, school committee?
Can hear from the group.
All right. No, no, I mean, we'll take public comment. We have a few more things on the agenda, but I did want to say one thing. I think I've been on the school committee for, I don't know, thirteen, fourteen years. And in all my years, I've never seen the staff work harder. I mean, the amount of work the administrators have done and just like what Matt has walked through. And what they're all doing every day, aside from the normal school stuff, curriculum and all of that, to, 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 to work through this pandemic like this, it's, it's unbelievable. And I know that our teachers are working harder than they've ever worked. And I think it's really important to remember that our model has our teachers working five days a week. At the middle and the high, our teachers are in school every day for the full school day with students five days a week. Um, you know, at the elementary level, they're doing one group in the morning and they got another group in the afternoon. So they are working really hard. And I know that everybody would prefer the all-in and, and nobody's saying this model is better than all-in. But they are working really hard. And I think Matt highlighted that, you know, we have you know, people that the six feet is super important. We have, you know, parents and families that would be go, willing to go down to three feet and want to do whatever to get their kids all in. We have people that want their kids in remote for, you know, medical reasons. So it's just such an incredibly difficult year. And I think our staff and I think the community has done an unbelievable job meeting this pandemic and, you know, and I think you know, everybody's working towards doing the best we can for the students and their education. And it's just a, it's a, it's a complicated process. So I want to like just give it, because we also did just finish the first quarter and just give a real big thank you to the staff and how hard they have worked. And so if we, is anything, anybody, any, anyone else?
I couldn't agree more. It's, I, I agree with everything you just said. It's, it's quite a, quite a load that they have carried and have made so many adaptations. And, you know, in addition to the five-day work week, I know that I have seen multiple emails on Friday nights and Sundays and so much communication to students to try to make sure that they just have all the communication that they need. And so it, it's been quite a lot of work and I have, I felt like we've been really lucky.
And all this, and the staff that, you know, some of them that have been here with us for so many years and to adapt and to, to be that flexible and to adapt for the sake of educating these students. I mean, appreciate it so much, all that they've done and all the families to adapt and to adjust. And I'm sure we will be doing it again, but the, the whole community coming together as such. So it's been very appreciated.
Um, and then everybody that's listening, we, this, this is an, this is an item that's on our agenda, as I think Ally said earlier, every, every meeting. You know, we will continue to discuss this. Obviously, you know. We've got some, we gotta get some information on budget that will be coming hopefully in December, if not January, but hopefully we'll, we'll have a much better idea of the financial picture come December. And so, um, you know, we'll just continue to discuss and, and, and figure out. So with that, I'll move on to the next item, five point four, the rapid point of care testing.
All right. So, um, at the state level, they have informed us that there's a program where they're trying to get some rapid point of care COVID nineteen testing for K through twelve schools. This is purely informational at this point. We have agreed to listen to what they have to offer. And there's two documents that are enclosed on the program in your packets. We have enrolled, so we can learn more. There are many steps to complete in order to be able to participate. We, we will keep you updated in, in a progress year. Obviously, there's a, there's a ton of hurdles and pieces that need to be kind of figured out. What this would do would allow us to, you know, potentially give a rapid test at the school level to a student or staff. You know, depending upon the age of the child or the staff member. We may need someone to do that, or they could self-administer or some other pieces. There's really a lot to learn here. Just because we give this test does not mean that the student who has symptoms can just return to class. It really depends on their medical history. So there's a tremendous amount to learn here. This is something that, you know, Sue Theodoro at Student Services and the nurses are gonna really have to look at. But we did sign up to learn more. This is not something that's binding at this point. It's simply an opportunity to figure out what this looks like. And, you know, I don't really think that this program would be necessarily up and running for us to access until next year, but we just want to find out what it's all about in order to find out if it makes sense.
Matt, when you say next year, do you mean like January? Or you mean next school?
Like FY twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
Yeah. Sue, do you want to add anything to that?
I, I think you said it all, Matt. I, I think, you know, we went to the initial webinar, we, we expressed our interest and we are waiting for next steps from the state. We expect to hear this week about what the next steps might be. But as he, as Matt said, we're just interested in finding out more about it and whether this is something that might be helpful in our community or not.
So very preliminary.
Yeah, it's just information right now, just so you can look it over. You know, you, you do have the two handouts that we were provided. So if you have questions, please ask. We don't have any answers yet, but if you have questions, we can, you know, make sure we ask those as we continue to get educated.
Anybody, anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. So five point five OSRP Implementation Committee.
All right. So OSRP stands for Open Space and Recreation Plan Implementation Committee. So the Open Space Recreation Committee has been soliciting information and they've had some public forums, and I think there's one coming up on the nineteenth. I will be communicating that information out tomorrow. And basically, they have not pulled the committee together yet, but they are asking for a school committee representative to serve on that committee once they start bringing together all the information that they've gathered. And would like to have one of us, one of you guys to be on that. I don't have any dates or times. It's just purely information, informational at this point, just to make you aware and to consider, you know, who might be a good person to do this. I don't even know what the time commitment is at this point.
Well, I did participate in the Zoom online forum. The last one, and they do talk a lot, they did speak a lot about tying in the schools with different aspects of, you know, pathways continuing and so forth and trying to connect everything. So I thought it was very interesting.
So you want to do it, Mary Lou?
Okay, but like Matt said, we don't know how much the time commitment is, but yes, I'll do it at this point unless someone else would, you know, would really like to do it, if I wouldn't want to stop anyone else from doing it. Anybody?
I think you'd be great, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Well done. Excellent. All right.
All right. So five point six, we don't have to make a motion, right? We just have.
No, I think we're good.
Five point six, school committee reports. None? Oh, the first. All right. So five point seven, public. So five point seven, public comment agenda items. So again, if you want to speak, please raise your hand. And if you speak, we ask you, give us your name and your address.
If anybody wants to speak, they can just raise their hand in the chat box. Okay, we do have somebody, Susan Fogley. Just as a reminder, if you could please state your name and your address. We will have you ask your question, then we will put you on mute to allow you to, to hear your answer.
Sorry. Hi, this is Susan Fogley, eighty-one Masthead Drive, Norwell. I have a couple of questions. I guess first, I think that we're talking a lot about hypotheticals here. We're talking about like the bus potentially backing up an old open bucket. Being a constraint to getting back to school. You know, I just, or bumping into desks. I just feel as though, you know, we kind of have to think outside the box here. And there are, it, it, you know, the biggest thing is to get our kids educated. Kind of moving off that, I find that surveys are really helpful. I'm glad you brought up the surveys. In, as in how many people would take the bus versus how many people would go full remote. I do feel like I've spoken to a lot of people about. The remote hybrid plan, and if they put their kids in hybrid, they feel comfortable sending their kids to school. I know that this is, you know. Against what somebody had mentioned on the meeting, but I feel like that's really necessary information because, you know, moving forward. Also too, like talking about the potential to have the, the staff quarantine. I mean. Again, we're trying to get our kids educated and we, I know that we have to look forward to what could potentially happen. But I don't see any job postings on the portal for Norwell. And I'm just trying to figure out kind of like, you know. It seems as though there's a lot of. Going against getting these kids back in school for the next semester and you guys are, you seem to be. Not putting it off, but for lack of a better term, kind of putting it off until September of twenty twenty-one. I do have more to say, but I'll just kind of address it as it goes.
I think I'll have Matt addresses, but as you heard, we're looking at, he's, he's given us ways to transition to all-in before the fall of twenty twenty-two. Or twenty twenty-one, sorry, that's FY twenty-two. The biggest hurdle honestly is, is not buses, it is, it is the biggest hurdle is budget and, and. We, we have to find out more information on the budget and all those financial pieces that Matt talked about. If we don't have the money. We can't put kids all the way back in. It's not. Everybody would love to see kids all in, but there are some really serious hurdles that are more than just. Bumping into desks and. And driving on a looking bucket and finances is a big one. So. I think Matt did a good job tonight of laying that, laying that out. So. I guess that's my answer. I don't know if you have anything to add, Matt.
No, I mean, I do think that this is something that we have continuously, continuously talked about as a leadership team. We do have a group that comes together on a weekly basis of, of teachers that kind of talks about. You know, concerns and thoughts and processes on how to bring people back together again. You know, I, I did think it was very, very important to kind of lay out. Some of the high-end areas based upon, you know, the statement that Governor Baker put out there. And I, I think we just needed to clarify that information. I, I don't think there's any question. It's something we want to do. You know, same time, we do have to deal with this pandemic as it has been given to us. But we will continue to work at it and we'll continue to try and get as much information we can to inform our decision-making process.
Could I also add that obviously getting the students educated. Is the most important mandate of, of what we do in our school system and any public school system. And we have a really, really strong commitment to doing that in the best possible way we can. We also can't forget in this equation. The teachers and staff that really drive this whole system to be able to work and function the way it does, coming in every day and being there. For the kids and the families and we have a contract with them and we have commitments as well. And, and those are according to. So, you know, the current six-foot guideline. So I think we also have to remember that. We have to make sure that. We don't forget how important they are in, in this equation and any change that would take place going forward would be contingent. Also upon how they feel as a whole constituency about being back in the classroom and how many of those people were able to get back into the schools.
Okay, but so the guidelines are three to six feet. So anyways, my next question is. I'm unclear to why having the children in school full-time actually increases the costs. I mean, we're doing double the bossing right now. You know, I, can you answer that question for me? You know, how did, basically like in, in a, in general too, how did Norwell sort of? You know, we're, we're, we're just like every other town. We have towns that are back in full. I mean, you've got Falmouth, you've got. You know, other towns that are working that their most, you know, youngest grades are going back to school. Studies have shown that those are the grades that are most important. And you're saying we're going to focus on the high school down. You know, how did we, how did we, according to other towns, sort of blow our budget? And why does having the schools in-person full increase costs?
Matt, I'll let you go with that one.
Susan, your, your, your questions asked in a, in a difficult manner. You know, I think that every district has kind of set up its own approach. You know, our approach at the elementary level has provided. Our students to have in-person four days a week in their academics, which is one of the best models that I've seen. Across the state and we've been informed it's one of the best models that's been across the state. There are some areas in which the student population is so low right now, because so many students left that they're able to bring. A particular grade back here and there. And there are some newer buildings that have been built in which. There's nine hundred square feet rather than seven hundred square feet in the classroom, so they can still meet the six-foot guidelines. You know, if you'd like to have a conversation about the schools that you feel have gone, you know, full in-person for a grade here and there. Versus, you know, an entire kind of system for all students. Rather than just a cohort that happens to work and, and work towards, you know, that sort of equity for all students in that particular situation. I'm happy to have that conversation and, you know, look at some of that information. You know, in, in terms of budgets, we made a very strong commitment to return our staff this year and not cut our staff. We did cut some proposed areas. We did forego the hiring of an administrator and all levels have pretty much taken either a, a pay cut or a furlough day. As same on the town side. You know, the reason why you're looking at things differently here is we've, you know. Usually had class sizes easily at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three. Some of those class sizes, we've been able to get down over time. You know, there's a time when I was a principal at the high school and, and you know, we all remember very well that the elementary school had class, average class sizes of twenty-six, twenty-eight. We didn't chip away at the elementary class sizes to getting them down, you know, under twenty-two until. Several years after the override passed in two thousand twelve. You know, to sit there and think like right now at the Cole School for students that are in, I'm averaging just, just about twenty kids per class. But at eighteen per class, I'd need to hire six more teachers. To do that. And I need six classrooms to do that. So that's where you start looking at these exponential costs. And what's going on with the budget. So we have been able to provide what we're doing at, at a very razor-thin margin. And I think in a lot of ways, we're doing it, it very well.
I just want to add because. One thing that Matt and Warren have done an excellent job over the years is manage our budget. We did not blow our budget. That is a total misstatement. This has been managed very well actually. And we are in a hybrid mode with kids in class as much as Matt had mentioned. Because they've done such a good job with the budget and to find some sources of revenue. To, to be able to do what we've done so far. And so we are going to take the time and because. We don't have a state budget yet. That's not our fault. That's at the state level. We need that information to come in to better inform. What we can do for the next step. So I do just need to correct that statement because in no way, shape or form did we blow a budget.
Oh, sorry, I'm muted. So I have a question. As far as. Vinyl School goes, why can't we use the cafeteria, the lunchroom, I'm sorry, the lunchroom cafeteria, the music room, the art room and the gym as usable classroom space?
Those, the spaces can be used. Currently, the music and our teacher are using those rooms to teach from. You know, you, we would, again, we need to, if we're going to add classroom teachers to those rooms, we're going to have to hire them.
But I'm under the understanding that there are faculty that have two supervised people. That have brought their kids to school at Vinyl, twenty-one children that are getting supervised and then they go to school with our classes in the afternoon. So they get twice the amount of, you know, time at school. That comes out of our budget and those are two, two teachers or people that could be used in two out of those four spaces. My thought was it would be usable to do Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in school. Wednesday is remote with all the specialists. That way the specialists are zooming from home anyways. Many are. As we're doing it now and they deal with every grade throughout the entire Wednesday and we have their spaces for full days a week.
So Susan, I'm, I'm more than happy to have a conversation with you offline, but you know, we've just outlined. The realities of, yes, buses are an issue. I, I can't bus four hundred students at the elementary level and I can only put twenty-four students on eight or seven buses. And we don't have the capacity for the students to be picked up and dropped off at those locations.
I, I think Matt probably important to add too, that those are aides that are supervising those students. Those are not teachers.
That's why I raised the question.
Well, that's what, so I'm just clarifying that those are aides, not teachers.
But it's taking up usable space is my point. So just, you know, Mr. Keegan, I would love to have a conversation with you offline.
Sure.
All right, all set.
Sean, anybody else?
This time I don't see anybody's with a hand raised. So if we give one last call for anybody that would like to raise their hand in the chat room. Okay, Mr. Keegan, there's no other hands being, oh, we do have one. Apologize, one moment. Ms. Lyden, if you could please present your name and your address prior to asking your question.
Hi, my name is Cindy Lyden. It's twenty-three Hall Drive. I just had a question for you, Matt, and I apologize if you already answered it, but. What happens if we don't get the nine hundred thousand dollars from the state before twelve thirty-one twenty?
So basically what would happen is, you know, let's say they, everything that goes to them, they have to approve individually. So out of that list, they could approve half of it. They could approve three quarters of it. They could approve all of it. So in conversations with Peter Born, one of the things that would happen is, is they also have put in money on the town side to the Plymouth County situation. And we have followed all the instructions to the best of our ability. And if it turns out that things can't be refunded. Then, you know, we'll have to go to a special town meeting in the spring to pay for those things out of possibly free cash or other areas. Or depending upon what happens for the state, the town budget. There could be some things that fill in those gaps and/or could be used to continue to keep our aides, our custodians and nurses in a floating capacity. Which is, we have no idea how to assess that until we get all that information.
Okay, we do have another individual. If you could please announce your name and your street address prior to asking your question.
It's Eileen Corbett and it's forty-one Hemlock Drive. And I just quickly would like to say I know Kirsten. And all of the school committee members said how grateful we are for the faculty and staff. But I would like each of you to know from parents in town, we are so grateful for the service of the school committee this year. What you folks have done for our children is just. It is amazing and we are so grateful for each one of you to give up your time for us. So thank you.
Well, Eileen, that just, that really touched me, really. Thank you so much, you know. Thank you so much for saying that. That really means a lot to me. Thank you for saying that, Eileen.
Okay, so at this time, we have no other hands being raised, Mr. Keegan, and we are ready to proceed.
So, all right, Matt, five point eight, updates and correspondence.
So in your packet, you know, we provided the FY twenty-two budget development timeline. There's been some other salary scale movement appointment scheduled, the November one enrollment report, many newsletters and some NSAS correspondence. And tremendous amount of correspondence to families as, as we can continue to communicate as best we can.
Matt, I wanted to say, you know, what a great job that the principals are doing, you know, with all the newsletters. And I've just really noticed how much more in-depth everything is. With the communication to the families, it looks really good.
Yeah, I mean, people have really stepped up as much they can to get the information out there, get on the website and provide it in email form. And really try and keep people informed. We know that this isn't easy. Know people are working really hard and, you know, people are making sacrifices across the board. But we really are trying to provide the best that we can in the given situation.
I say one more quick thing before we go. As we said at the beginning, this update happens at every school committee meeting. So anyone who is interested, this is a. Constantly changing, ever-moving situation. It is completely fluid. So. We need to just keep addressing all the issues as they come up. Everyone's goal is to eventually, God, get the kids back in school. Full-time. And so it's just, it's just the timeline of how and when we make that happen. And so every meeting, we will be discussing what's happened. And what's happening.
Thanks for saying that, Allison, too. I think that a lot of times when, you know, we have our meetings, we don't have a lot of attendees. It's hard for you folks at home and to, to know what's going on here. And we've been having these discussions and Matt's been updating us continuously. About the situation this year. So join in anytime.
Ally, that was a really good point. The ultimate goal is to get them back in full person, full-time in person. And we're always talking about where we are in relationship to that school.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.